Just waiting for Councilman O'Connell to step out a minute.
I'll look that still. That's not yours, is it?
No.
Louis isn't here either. There you go. Chief, sorry to keep you awake.
It's our new IT manager. I think I'll start the stated session even though that Councilman O'Connell is on his way here. He'll be just detained momentarily outside after our executive session. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Brown followed by the pledge of the flag.
That is our head. Father, we thank you for just giving us the opportunity to do work for your people. We ask God that you continue to give us insight and be mindful of the people that we're representing and that we know, Father, we can do all things for you. So we ask you to spring to us where we need it, and in these things we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Eddinger?
He's on vacation.
Mr. Milan?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Mrs. Volcano?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
Present. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded in discussion. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Act shall end in minutes of our June 23 meeting.
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
At this time, I'll introduce Chief Scialzo to make some opening comments before I swear in Officer Piparado.
Good evening. Chief Carl Scialzo, City of Easton Police Department, 48 North Fourth Street. This is our third, I think our third session in a row where I've been before you to either hire or promote an officer within the department. So it's always a pleasure to take a moment to thank you all for everything that you've done for the department. I've done it every time that we've had a swearing in or hiring, and tonight's no exception. Thank you all for all you've done for the department, supporting us and allowing us to be the department that we are in all the ways that you do. So I'll have Detective John Piparado step up this evening. We're here tonight to promote or make a recommendation for promotion of Detective John Piparado to the rank of inspector. Come on up, John. Should I stand up over here for me? Detective John Piparado, again, he's being recommended for promotion to the rank of inspector. He began his employment with the City of Easton Police Department in 2004 and has been a dedicated officer during his time with the department. During his time as a patrol detective, he's, I'm sorry, during that time, he's been a patrol detective, he's been a defensive tactics instructor, and an accreditation assistant manager, and a member of the Easton Police Department Special Response Unit. In 2010, Detective Piparado was promoted to Detective Division. While in Detective Division, he investigated hundreds of crimes. He's been tasked with lead responsibilities in crime scene processing and evidence collection. He has worked as a liaison between the courts and the department and has taken on many administrative responsibilities that have been tasked to the department's Criminal Investigation Division. In 2019, Detective Piparado was appointed as one of the department's evidence custodians. Detective Piparado has dedicated over 16 years to the law enforcement profession and to the City of Easton Police Department. For all of these reasons, I am recommending he be promoted to the rank of inspector to oversee the department's Crimes Division.
It's right there, Mayor. I'll need that back. The original.
And I will enforce the laws of this common law and the verdicts of peace. And I will discharge the duties of my office. I do further swear that I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration of person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap or disability. And further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I knowingly a member of any organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States of America or of this common law. Nor will I by force or violence deny other persons their rights under the Constitution of the United States or this common law. And you further swear that I will not so advocate, nor will I knowingly become a member of such organization during the period that I'm employed.
I'd like to just start with the comments, and I'll ask other councilmembers if they have any. First of all, I want to thank the family for coming this evening. It's a wonderful family, looks great. Your dad is a very important, integral part of this city. As I said, I try to say to all the officers whenever I see them, I might get some credit, council might get some credit, the staff for turning the city around, but guess what? It was the police. The police have done a great job. In 2008, when I took over a city, it was violent, drug-ridden, gang, all over the place. And today, it's a much safer place, it's a much safer city. No one wants to invest or live in a city that isn't safe. So Officer, or Inspector now, Piparado, I'd like to just thank you publicly for doing a great job. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. John, thanks so much for your service. We look forward to you leading our Detective Division, and thank you, your family also, for coming down and supporting you in all these years that you're maintaining safety in the City of Easton. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant, and stay well and be safe.
I would also like to thank you for all your service, and I wish you the best of luck in the future and your career.
And John. John's one of my base officers. We get to speak a lot, especially along the, every year during the National Night Out, we tend to bump heads in different places. I mean, John, let's face it, you eat more than me, but, but anyway, John, congratulations on becoming an inspector in your department. It says a lot about your integrity and the integrity of the other officers. I do want to take one note, though, and thank the chief as he promotes within the ranks of his department or, as they say, agency. That says a lot. We are one of the, I've said it before and I'll say it again, we're one of the finest police agencies in Lehigh Valley and beyond, and I'm proud to be a part of that.
Inspector Piparado, thanks very much for your service. We really appreciate it, and congratulations on your promotion, and thanks for being a member of the best police department in the Lehigh Valley.
Well said. Thank you, John, and family. I should have thanked the wife as well, but the kids are the ones who have to hear about police officers all the time in school, so be proud, don't be afraid. Don't just stand up, and we'll continue with the meeting. Those that were here just for the swearing in, don't feel that you have to stay for the entire meeting.
They give you tests at the door.
Public comment on agenda items only. If you have a comment on agenda items only, please come up to the podium, give your name and address. If not, there is time at the end of the meeting for comments about anything dealing with the City of Easton from our residents. Consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Under the consent agenda, we have Bill Number 22 that was introduced by Mayor Panto, which would change the ordinance to change Northampton Street between Fourth Street and Second Street to become one-way heading east. We have a resolution being introduced, well, I'm sorry, would be introduced by Mr. O'Connell. It's approving a third handicap parking space at the recommendation of the Board of Health in the 100 block of East Madison Street. And then we also have, it would be Dr. Ruggles, the approval to apply for a DCED grant, which in the amount of $400,000, that would include improvements to Northampton Street between, Wood Avenue, I believe it is, Dave, Wood Avenue, I'm sorry, between Northampton Street and 13th Street Exchange. That's under consent.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any additions, corrections, or any changes that they would like to make? Seeing, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
And Mayor Panto?
Aye. There's no reports to be received by council this evening. I'll go right on to committee reports. Vice Mayor Brown, Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have three things coming forth this evening. Bill Number 23, which is amending 2020 Recreation Fund Budget. Bill Number 24 amending the 2020 General Fund Budget, and also Bill 25, which is amending revolving capital fund for this year. I also, under my report, would like to send out my condolences to one of my friends', family, Mr. Louis Tita, who was very instrumental in the City of Easton during the recreation when there was no baseball up on top of Hacks Park. Between him and others who volunteered and put money in there, began to get that baseball field back in place. Dave, you remember this, let's go back some time. So my condolences to the family at this time.
Sorry to see that in the paper this morning. Okay, Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Volcano.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to report to council that next week, we will, the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Pine Street property will meet and continue discussion on the recommendation of city council. That's all I have.
Thank you. Planning and Coaches Department, the Committee, Councilmember O'Connell?
I have no report, Mayor.
Public Safety Committee, Councilman Ruggles?
I have no report.
Public Works Committee is not here. Administration Committee, Councilman Milan?
I have no report, Mayor.
Reporter of the City Solicitor, Mr. Sheer?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met immediately prior to this meeting and discussed a number of personnel issues, and I have no other report.
Thank you very much. My report, I will just try to be as brief as I can. ARPA budget, we have a meeting tomorrow internally again to come up with recommendations. I will tell you that some of the recommendations I am making to the staff, and we will be making to council, deal with grants for deconversion, taking multifamily homes back to single-family homes. It also deals with facade grants throughout the city, not just the downtown, not given by the city. The downtown grants are given by the Greater Easton Development Partnership. There'll also be money for assisting homelessness, potentially addition to the Safe Harbor Building that the city owns. Mortgage assistance, rental assistance, broadband assistance. We'll direct them first to the state and county funds, and then we will appropriate some of those dollars towards that. But I think we will be coming up with a budget that's really good, that puts people to work as the ARPA wants us to do, the American Rescue Plan Act. And we'll also look to do some sanitary and sewer improvements throughout the city, stormwater improvements. We'll look to do some things with tourism development, all that's allowed by the ARPA Act. September 4th, for those of you who don't know, we'll be promoting this pretty heavily, but Easton was chosen as one of the cities that Frank Stiller, who's the chairman of the foundation that awards grants and builds homes for the deceased family members and first responders' families, will be running from the Pentagon, walking, I'm sorry, not running, walking from the Pentagon in Washington DC to Shanksville PA to the tunnel, to the Towers, Memorial, 9/11 Memorial in New York City. He will be passing through Easton on Saturday, September 4th. We'll be having a big first responders parade, inviting all first responders from the entire Lehigh Valley. We already have a commitment from the Eastern High School Band and the Eastern, Big Easy, Eastern Brass Band. We have the mascots coming from all over, whether it be the Red Rover, the Leopard, or the Mountain Hawk from Lehigh, the Iron Pigs mascots. We have a number of things. The city will also be hosting the 100 by 50-foot traveling exhibit for 9/11. It'll be, the docents for that will be retired firefighters from New York City who will explain all the various artifacts from that horrific day. Then there will be a barbecue, depending on how big the parade is, how many participants, it may be just for participants, or it may be for everybody who decides to show up. And then after that, we have from 1:00 to 4:00 before the big bicycle races, we have Lucky Seven will be providing entertainment in centers, or actually down at Larry Holmes Drive. We moved it down to Larry Holmes Drive because that's where the bike races will start and finish line. The bike races will start at 5:00. Right now, Dave Hopkins will tell us that the registration is full. They may accept a couple, some others that are notable, but we have a number of notable cyclists who are professionals, amateurs, and Olympians coming to Easton that day from over 20 different countries and over 300 bicyclists. So we're excited about that. And then at 9:00 at the end, around 9:15, 9:30, at the end of the bicycle races, we will launch a fireworks display at the Forks of the we will launch a fireworks display at the Forks of Delaware. So, it should be a good night, good day in downtown. Oh, the Interfaith Services at 9:00 in the morning. Thank you for reminding me. I almost forgot that, I got in trouble. Yes.
I thought the bike race was going to be on September 2nd.
September 4th. The race, the walk originally was going to be on September 2nd and because of his schedule, they agreed to do it on September 4th, which is a much better day for us. This Saturday night is cruise nights. With the one in January, in June was postponed because of rain. Looks like a big rainstorm Saturday night as well. So, we're not picking, doing so well on the third Saturday of the month. Fourth Street Garage has started. The update on that is, it looks like we'll be on time to open up next summer, at which time we'll make a decision, we'll have a recommendation to City Councils to when the Pine Street Garage comes down. If you haven't noticed, the Pine Street Garage has 330 monthly parkers, which leaves about 170 spaces for Crayola every day. So, the garage has been full this summer, as we expect it to be as Crayola starts to come back out of hibernation from COVID. And so, those of the, that keep saying, "We don't need any parking, we don't need any parking." When that 500-car garage comes down, I don't know where the 330 people that park there every month. Now, it is empty during the day because obviously the 330, most of the 330 people are apartment renters who are leaving to go to work and they come back at, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night. I want to thank Louis Campos and Mark Lisinecki and Stephanie Weber, who's here. The three of them, plus working with the chief, have brought a tentative agreement to City Council this evening and hopefully we'll vote on it in our next meeting with the Fraternal Order of Police. And we're very excited about that. We avoided Act 111 arbitration, which was scheduled to start in 13 days. We have a new business downtown that is also creating customers in our garage, as well as for our restaurants. Two Rivers Tubing Company is in where the old police station was on South 3rd Street. And they're telling me that at least 50% of their people are staying in town after they return from, on the bus, or they walk up from the river and going to our restaurants and diners to eat and enjoy the downtown. Also, the last meeting in August, one of our iconic projects in the West Ward, of course, is the Wood Avenue Project that Dave's been working on for many years, putting together as much grant money as we can. From 7th Street to 13th Street, Wood Avenue will be upgraded. That presentation will be made the second meeting in August? I'm sorry, yeah, second, I meant July, second meeting in July. So, we'll look forward to seeing those plans, as we all saw the Center Square plans. This one is for the West Ward. Our demolition of 1226, 1228, 1220 Ferry Street, no, 1220 and 1226. Ferry Street, next to Centennial, the two bloated properties there, demolition contract is out for that, as we have some iconic plans for Centennial Park, as we look to expand the park space and the green space in the West Ward.
Mayor, I'm sorry, what address is it?
Wood Avenue, oh, 1220, 1226. Is that correct? No, 1220, 1222? 1218. I'm close. 1226 is one we're working on. And that ends my report, so we'll move on. The correspondents, I'll accept the memo from the City Controller, appointing Deputy City Controller. Yes?
I don't, maybe you don't want it on the agenda. Can I see, I give a...
Oh, without a doubt, I want it on agenda.
Is that okay?
Absolutely, I don't want to silence you.
You're the chair.
No, it's okay.
No, I just want to make, thank you for that, Mayor. I wanted to make a couple, one important update. First of all, in terms of positions...
Oh, that's right.
That are being filled.
Yeah.
Number one, I want to note that Kevin McCartney, McCarthy, I knew that. Kevin, I've been talking to him all week, Kevin McCarthy, we brought Kevin back as our recreation supervisor. That's a big win. He was busy this weekend coaching a local group of talented basketball players down at a national tournament in Florida. One of them is Mr. Lisinecki's son. And they had two, they won two games, from what I'm understood. But the most important part is that Kevin's back with us and he's full-fledged, working on, you know, different programs.
Recreation and neighborhood programs.
That's a big win because as everyone knows, during COVID, we defunded that position. And fortunately, Kevin was stuck around and he accepted the offer to come back. So, very happy about that.
That was part of the resolution that they passed two weeks ago for the ARPA money.
That's correct, and that's a good example of that. Number two is that the Finance Department, right now, has, an offer was made to, for a Deputy Finance Director. If things go well with the background checks, et cetera, we should have a new Finance Director starting next week.
No, you'll have a deputy.
Deputy Finance Director starting next week.
Mark is still...
Who has, who has the skill sets that we're looking for that could really help assist Mark and the department down there and we can get back on track to producing timely reports back to Finance, let alone right now handling all the parking situations that we have going on. Mark is becoming more and more an expert on parking. He came up today and told me all he's doing is working on parking and parking issues. It's a lot to deal with that and everything else that's involved down there. So, hopefully we could bring some good news at the next council meeting. As the mayor mentioned, we do have a tentative agreement with the FOP. It was, we, we made that tentative agreement, as council knows, but for the public, literally, probably moments ago, in the last hour. It's been a long time, 13 days from an Act 111 arbitration, which you have to start filing for that arbitration, I believe.
Your group?
Last year?
Last year.
Yeah, last year you had to file for it. So, it's been a long time coming. Even though you, you file for the impasse, you can continue to negotiate. So, to the credit of the FOP, they continued to negotiate and we continued to move forward in earnest. And I think with, through good communication, we settled on, I think, a very good contract. The, the next item regarding labor relations is, I'm going to start the negotiations with the APSME Group. And that starts up now, by the end, their contract runs out the end of the year, just to let the rest of council know. And finally, I do want to acknowledge, we have a new IT manager who started with us this week, Mazen Faris.
Mazen?
Well, yes, Mazen.
M-A-Z-E-N?
M-A-Z-E-N. I'm probably miss, mince pronouncing it, did I get it right?
Is that him in the back?
Mazen, Mazen. You know, it threw me off because someone during the interview process, one of our directors affectionately called him Amazing.
Grace.
But Mazen is here, who has a really solid background for an individual, what we're looking for. Over 20 years of professional experience managing similar-sized budgets, coming from the private sector. I do want to invite Mazen up to perhaps introduce, introduce himself and talk a little bit. Yeah, you're, this is it, you gotta, I told you, you gotta get, this is, this is, this is your first opportunity, but...
But you do have to give your name and address. At least you'll pronounce it right.
Well, it, it, Mazen, is that?
Mazen.
Mazen. Mazen, the directors have, the directors have to do that and manage?
Yes, absolutely.
I just, since he's new, I don't need his address, but since he's new, I need to have his spells.
Okay. Why don't you then introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your background?
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah. My name is Mazen Faris. I have about 20 years' experience in information technology and, you know, I live in Whitehall, in the High Valley, obviously. I just want to thank, you know, Louis and the mayor for giving me the opportunity to join the city and work for the city and contribute to the Information Technology Department, also work with all, you know, all the other employees. My address, if you want my address, I'll give it to you.
It's okay.
I just wanted to know how to spell your last name.
Yeah, I'm A-Z-E-N and last name is F-A-R-E-S.
F-A-R-E-S?
That's correct.
So, just for the record, your first name is Mazen?
Mazen, yeah.
Since four people just misspell it, mispronounce your name, just so you know.
I said Mazen.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much and I'm looking forward to working with the City Council.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mazen. Anything else, Mr. Campos?
No, I think we're good there. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Ruggles.
I just, just as a concern, I understand that the moratorium on rental, or evictions, I guess, is due to end the end of this month. And I just wanted to know if the city is doing anything to direct people to, I mean, to prepare for that? I mean, I have no idea what the impact is going to be, but, you know, I would, I would rather have us be ready to handle whatever it might be than try to react to it.
We are recommending that they contact John Kingsley's offices and be told of who to apply for at the, at the county funds on eviction assistance for payments. What we'll be recommending to City Council is that our funds that we appropriate, excuse me, appropriate, be appropriated to that fund because they have CACLV as the administrator of that fund. And obviously, we don't have anybody in City Hall to do that. We are going to be recommending as part of our ARP budget, that the hiring of an individual to, just to handle all the grants that we have, any ARP funds, so that we have a proper auditing trail and for the federal government. So, yes, we are directing them, right now, if they need broadband, mortgage assistance, or rental assistance, we're directing them to the C-MEN program.
Mayor, I do have a follow-up, I do have one more item.
Go ahead.
If you, if that question was answered for you?
I believe so.
Okay. Also, on the agenda tonight, if you would know, and I just want to bring it up to council's attention, there is a, a contract that put in, put forward in front of you for approval with Open Gov. And that contract itself, I'll have Mr. Norowski talk about it because it's in the Planning and Co. Department, but that contract itself, as well as hardware that we are going to be purchasing for the Police Department to help upgrade their systems within their vehicles, is going to be procured from the funds from the CARES Act. This is the final round, or the final sum, if you will, of the money that's going to be used that will help automate certain processes within the city. So, part of it is going to be in Open Gov and Mr. Norowski's going to talk a little bit about it tonight, or as extensively as you want. You know, it's really going to bring a touchless application to the city, in addition to providing a lot of efficiency. So, he'll be able to talk about that. But on the same token, because the police procurement process allows us to purchase the needed hardware without going to City Council because it's a CoStar program, I have Chief Scalzo here to also talk about that in terms of that budget that's going to be used that council has approved. If you'd like, Chief Scalzo can talk a little bit about that. If not, you know, we can wait to, until Stevens up.
Well, let's do that when we get to letter H under new business.
Okay.
So, that's fresh in our minds.
Okay.
Okay, new business, Madam Clerk.
Okay, under new business, we have Bill Number 23 being introduced by Mr. Brown, where it would amend the 2021 Recreation Fund Budget.
So introduced.
We have Bill Number 24 being introduced by Mr. Brown, where it would amend the 2021 General Fund Budget.
So introduced.
Bill Number 25 being introduced by Mr. Brown, that would amend the 2021 Revolving Capital Fund Budget.
So introduced.
Bill Number 26 being introduced by Dr. Ruggles, where we would be amending the snow emergency routes.
So introduced.
And Bill Number 27 being introduced by Dr. Ruggles, where we would be amending the meter zones.
So introduced.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mayor Panto, which would, where council would review and approve a mutual release and settlement agreement with Mr. Jagdish Desai. He's the owner of 222 Northampton Street.
So introduced, so moved.
Moved. I need a second.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. Roll call.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
We have a resolution being introduced by Dr. Ruggles, where we're reviewing and approving the amendments that were recommended by the Civil Service Board to the Civil Service Rules and Regulations.
So move.
Second.
Moved and second, discussion.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Mr. Shear and I had a conversation earlier regarding this change and I think it presents some, some problems for the city. One being, if we were to, if you guys were to, if we were to adopt these changes, in theory, the mayor would appoint the deputy fire chief, that I interpreted based on a rule in the statute in the Third Class City Code. Do you want to kind of touch upon that for a second?
Sure, the, and first of all, I do want to thank Councilman Milan for calling me up before the meeting. It's very helpful for me to know if there's an issue concerning, you know, any of the legal issues ahead of time. This has been, this has been an issue that we've actually, the office actually reviewed several years ago in 2019, which is why the opinion that was attached was my initial opinion concerning the appointment of deputy chief outside of the Civil Service Regulations. And tonight, of course, we're here because of the amendments to the Civil Service Rule. But there, there is a provision that, when you look at the Third Class City Code, that ultimately indicates that the...
We don't, we don't operate under a Third Class City Code.
We have a Home Rule Charter.
We have a Home Rule Charter.
Which doesn't address these issues.
It doesn't?
No.
I thought, I thought very clearly it said the mayor's not involved in personnel hirings, that the city administrators charge for that.
Well, we don't, we don't deal specifically with the police chief and the fire chief, I don't believe.
I think it's the city administrator.
Well, it's, there's...
It's within consult with the mayor, but it's not the mayor alone.
Right. Okay. Well, 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 the Third Class City Code specifically has provisions dealing with the exclusion of the chiefs of being of police and fire and referencing the mayor's appointment. So, if we've modified it through our Home Rule Charter, that's fine, because you can modify through a Home Rule Charter. But, but the, the issue that, I'm presenting your issue, if that's okay.
I can, you can present it, I can present it, I mean, it just...
Councilman Milan questioned whether there is authority within the Third Class City Code for the deputy chief to be excluded from the Civil Service process.
Correct.
That's different than what he brought up.
Well, it's, it's part of the entire question I had to Mr. Shear.
And, and, and I had originally opined that the, the language in the, in the revisions to the Civil Service Act exclude, when it excluded chiefs, that that would have, should have incorporated deputy chiefs because the whole role of the deputy chief is to fulfill all the obligations of the chief itself and therefore, we could read that word in a broader context. Now, elsewhere within the Third Class, within that section of the Civil Service Act, they specifically talk about where the mayor appoints the police chief and fire chief, doesn't reference deputy chief. And, and I had in my 2019 opinion indicated that while I felt in my opinion it would be sound to include the deputy chief within the context of chiefs, I can't, there's no, there's no cases on this. The statute is otherwise, the word deputy chief doesn't exist in any of those sections. But when you look at, when you compare it to how the Labor Relations Board, Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board, has dealt with the deputy chief, they clearly indicate deputy chief is not in the bargaining unit because the deputy chief fulfills all the roles of management. And I believe the goal here is to give greater authority within the chief of the department and administration to select someone for reasons that might be outside of the very constrained interests of the Civil Service Act. And, and, and I balanced, because I did not feel there was clear insight, what is the purpose of the Civil Service Act compared, what is the purpose of the Civil Service Act, period? And that's to, to try to avoid any...
Nepotism.
Nepotism is one of them, but it could just be a friend that you want to put into, into office without going through some level of qualifications. As it turns out, to become promoted to this position, you have to be with, you have to be within the ranks already, which means you've already passed at least that first screening process. And, and, but, but again, there was, there wasn't an ambiguity and I still think it's good policy to, to, to just read into the word chiefs, the word deputy chief. But I looked further because of the, the sections where they say excluded the chiefs and they talk about, and this is Third Class City Code, 12101.1, which is what is referred to as being that the mayor buy and with approval and consent of council, which can be modified by the Home Rule Charter. So, if it is, shall appoint the fire chief. So, so that's where, that's where that exclusion was. And, and the question was, it says fire chief, it doesn't say deputy chief.
Right, but, go ahead.
And no, but, but what I found, look, looking at 12104, 12101... And no, but, but what I found, looking at twelve one oh four, twelve oh one oh four deals with fire marshal. And there it says a city may provide for the creation of the office of fire marshal shall be appointed by the mayor. Again, same issue about who's really doing it with our home rule charter, but that exclusion that references chiefs, well, the fire marshal is obviously excluded as well because it's not appointed by the civil service board. And the fire marshal in our city, the definition of deputy chief, the obligation is a fire marshal. So that it just gives, it gives, I believe, some added support to the original opinion that this is something that can be appointed outside of the civil service process.
Well, like I said, I disagree with your assessment because the original intent of the statute was that anything, any position below the fire chief or the police chief would be civil service. There is a testing mechanism for it. I mean, you can take the fire marshal and correlate it to a deputy fire chief, but unless it says deputy fire chief, I'm not going to take that assessment seriously. Because really, when this happened, the point was that you've removed nepotism from the process. Now all we're doing.
Assumed nepotism.
Well, I mean.
Well, they assume that everybody is crooked, and that's not true.
Well, I wasn't.
Mr. Campus has made all the hiring since I've been in office.
Right.
Because the charter says that.
Right, no, I understand that, but my thing is though that if, if it was the legislative intent to remove that process and to create some kind of testing module to effectively assess someone, I don't see why we would change it though. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, unless I read these changes incorrectly, which I don't think I did, there are, unless there's somewhere else, maybe Stephanie can elaborate, where are the qualifications for the deputy fire chief? Do they exist anywhere? I mean, if you guys redline this document, I don't think they're, I mean, unless someone can direct me to where they're at. I mean, I looked in the ordinances, I saw nothing, and in the civil service packet.
Well, if this is approved, I'm assuming we'll do the job description and put the qualifications there that we could do. I mean, here's, here's the issue for me. I'm a manager. I was a teacher in the teacher union, I bargained for teachers' union, but I didn't bargain against a union brother who was my principal. They had their own union. In this case, the twenty-four hour supervisors being the captains and the lieutenants are both, all of them are in the bargaining unit. The only two people that are out of the bargaining unit, the entire fire department, have been the chief and the deputy chief, and we took the deputy chief out. Now the chief is, and they wonder why we don't have a succession plan or a good management team at the fire department. It's because everybody's in the same bargaining unit. And as I explained, explained to the three captains, if there's a grievance against something you do by a fellow union brother, that's between you guys. I'm not paying, the city taxpayers, not spending taxpayer dollars defending a captain when they're not in our, they're not on our management team. I, I think there's, there's, there's a dichotomy that does not exist at the fire department. And that dichotomy is management and labor, and they should get along, they should be respectful of each other, but somebody has to be the management. And in the fire department's case, the people who are with the firefighters all day and all night aren't. This goes well beyond the deputy chief. I don't think the captain should be in the union. I think, and our captains and our police department aren't under, the lieutenants who run a city patrol division aren't in, aren't in the same bargaining unit. I think if you want to know what is wrong, it has to do with management. And the management of the fire department, and the chief has done a great job since he's been there, but he's the only, he's the, he's the island. I mean, there's no one out there for him to go to. We don't even have a deputy chief, and if we do have a deputy chief, how confidential can his conversations be that it doesn't get right back to the rank and file? I mean.
But I don't understand. That argument, Mayor, I guess my question is, where does removing this provision from the civil service have any direct result of what you just said about management, though? Like, I don't understand that, that comment, though.
The deputy chief is still in the same bargaining unit as the people he's overseeing.
Whether in a bargaining or not, where does that, if he's had, if he has confidence out with the fire chief, though, what does him having to do with the bargaining have to do with management, though? Like, I don't.
Is he a manager, or is he a?
Well, he's not the fire chief, he's administrator.
That ends up, that point's set.
I don't understand what has to do with the civil service rules, and they've been set for how many years now? We've changed these rules three times, by the way. Just to let everybody know, we've changed these rules three times to accommodate some kind of change in structure of the fire department. There's, we can't keep changing rules because we don't like the rules. The state made these rules for a reason.
The state doesn't administer the departments, they're legislators.
They oversee us, though.
They're legislators.
Right, but the state oversees us, that's all.
And I could point to a number of cities that do not have, that do the same thing we're doing right here tonight.
Do they have professional fire departments?
Yes, of course they do, they're cities. I only, I only deal with city mayors.
Well, I don't know, I mean, maybe some don't have, maybe they're, they have a merged chief, would you like me to speak to the issue?
Sure.
Okay, so the deputy chief is the number two person in the fire department. If I were to become ill, injured, or die, you need someone that's going to be able to take over that job. That is your number two guy who will move into the number one position. Strategic planning. If he's involved in the strategic planning, he can carry that out to the end. You have your succession plan then because he's been involved from the very beginning. There's more opportunity to vet this individual to make sure that he is a good fit to the administration. You can't vet them through an oral interview? Civil service allows you one test. That is it. Right. You can have multiple interviews to make sure that the guy you're getting, or the girl that you're getting, is the right person, just like you do with any other management position. So, so what's your, what is your reasoning for removing the testing component from the process, then? I don't understand your question. You want to remove the testing component, right? We're removing the deputy chief. Well, that's a testing component, so, so you want to remove that, correct? That's correct. So what is your logic behind that, then?
The logic I have, the logic I have is.
You want to appoint somebody that you feel is competent, so an oral interview wouldn't address that competency, correct?
Never.
No.
It doesn't, it doesn't address the competency.
It happens in the police department.
It, it doesn't address the competency of what, how, at this point, the deputy chief doesn't have to be the best firefighter who knows firefighting technology and can get a good grade on a test. They need to know how to manage people, how to get along with people that are in the same room for twenty-four hours a day. There's a big difference. It's like being a great player doesn't always become a great coach because they can't motivate the team to be cohesive and win.
Right.
And so, as I said, when I was a school teacher bargaining for teachers' contracts, my principal was not in my bargaining unit, and he was at the, on the other side of the table negotiating with me, but when we left, we're both professionals, but they had their own bargaining unit. What you're asking the deputy chief to do is be in the same union as the firefighters. If you want, if the deputy chief and the captains and lieutenant and police want to form their own union, I don't have a problem with that. But I don't think they should be in the same bargaining unit as the people that they're supposed to be supervising. And that's just a management, that's just a management decision.
I don't understand how you address that, Mayor. I'm talking about the civil service rules, independent of any bargaining issues you're quite, you're.
I, I listened to the solicitor's two thousand nineteen opinion.
But the reality is, though, that the intent of the legislation, as I stated numerous times in how many debates we've had about this same issue, is that we changed this three times. So clearly, something is wrong here. You can give them a test that essentially gives them three questions to answer, and that's done, you've completed the process, then. In an oral interview, can I just finish, please? In an oral interview, Mayor, the question you raised can be discussed in an oral interview. The chief does it, he promotes captains off of that, off of an oral exam. I mean, he doesn't want to bypass it. I mean, I mean, when we changed rules, he wasn't a fan of it, and no, I don't think anyone was a fan of it, but we followed the rules, though. So in an interview with the candidates, all the questions you raised, all the issues you raised, can be discussed in the interview. I mean, it's really not this complicated. Councilman, the mayor doesn't sit in on those interviews.
Thank you.
They are fire chiefs from other cities. They have no idea what these people are, or who these people are. They're with them for an hour. The management team from the city, the administration, gets to know these people. They have to be able to trust these people. So who sets the interview panel, then?
Civil Service Board.
It gets sent, it gets sent out to the Pennsylvania career chief. Who sets this, the panel? Who makes the panel? Who does it?
Civil Service Board, Stephanie.
So is that a rule?
I don't know, I don't think it's a rule.
I mean, if it's not a rule, then we can have people internally, then. Chief, if you're my asking, who does your panels for the captain interviews?
Ours is specific in the civil service rules. We have for anybody outside the union at the world, it's a written, pass, pass, fail, oral interview. For us, it's three members within the department, it's the chief or his designated, anybody of the rank and better hire.
Okay. Well, there you go, then. Well, how is that going to be fair of the only person that would be able to interview him? Why don't you talk to the chief, then? We can make your rules different, though. We can, we can make rules that are specific to your situation without changing the civil service rules that, in my opinion, violate third-class city code. They're not violating third-class city code. They're not now. They have, they've been in place now since I came on council, we changed the civil service rules that were approved by council and were reviewed by an independent solicitor. Okay, well, we've vetted this process through the civil service board. We're bringing it to you for the change.
Yeah, if I may, I just want to, I just want to read this language. I mean, it, if, if, we wouldn't have this problem if the legislature was just a little clearer, but the examinations, this whole issue is really whether they have to go through an examination process as opposed to the interview process that you would otherwise see in any high-management position within any business. And, and the city is, I hope, runs like a business to some extent, except that it truly recognizes that its customers are its bosses, which is, you know, the citizens. But one four four oh one, examination required of all appointees. No individual may be appointed to any uniform position in the police or fire department excluding chiefs unless, excluding chiefs unless all of the following apply. The individual passed all examinations as provided for under this chapter. Now, what are those examinations? I mean, we, we know it's a screening process, it's, it, there's no way in the world that you're going to, that you're going to show me anybody who could put together an examination that's of any worth, because it's supposed to be equal to everyone, that's going to properly subjective, subjectively, because this is all for being objective. You need a certain subjectivity when you're appointing someone in a high-management position, which is why I suggest they excluded chiefs. And then the individual was appointed in a manner according to the terms, provisions, and conditions of this chapter. But the key question is, why wouldn't the excluding chiefs exclude also the deputy chief?
Or battalion chief, platoon chief, whatever.
Well, at this point, I'm dealing with deputy chief. So, so, so where the, where the whole purpose of the deputy chief is to be the chief and to assist the chief in that, in that broad context. So I'm defining, I'm defining, because they didn't define it, so I'm defining chief as being the chief and the deputy chief.
And that's part, and that's part of the issue. So when we talk about running the city like a business, you know, no one is excluding the fact that this individual is going to have to be vetted. But when we talk about looking, looking wherever we can in, through the, through the lens of a business, you know, we have to put our common sense hat on. So the first test, I guess, if you will, was the legal test. And you just heard Attorney Shear discuss the ambiguity of the language. You know, Mr. Milan is saying one thing in terms of his interpretation and intent, and then, and then Attorney Shear is reading the language explicitly. I'll tell you, as an operator myself, as an administrator, the, the language does not do any favors for any of us because it's not clear. It's truly not clear, and it doesn't, it doesn't take an expert to read through the language and make an interpretation. Now, going back to this business argument, all right, and we talked a little bit of some of the operational needs, but part of the business operates, business argument, and also goes in hands with operational needs, is we hear a lot about how government is very bureaucratic. Well, I will, I will tell you this, that in this case, when we looked at that interpretation and said that the deputy chief is a chief, part of the problem why we're bringing it here is because, first of all, we have to go to civil service to be able to say we're going to post for this position. It's easier said than done to mobilize our civil service board. In fact, I just had a discussion with them and said, you guys need to put on the calendar a meeting once a month, because it was like, it's been pulling, it's been like pulling teeth the last couple of months, let alone during the COVID crisis, all right? That's a flaw in the system that we have here, it's a bad practice. The second thing is, once we post for it, if, when, if and when you can get a meeting, by the way, once we post for it, or at least we get the permission for civil service to be able to post for the position, it's six weeks to get this, to allow for the candidates to go ahead and take the test for the position. And then there's some other timeframes. One of the urgencies that we have here is that, A, we don't have that. And I do agree that perhaps to the, to the criticism that, yes, we've made these changes before, I'll tell you that we could continue to make these changes again. I, I do need council to be flexible when they need to be, and we'll exercise that opinion as administrators. I mean, we're, we're the paid professionals here, and I'm asking for that opinion. But of course, I'll take, I'll, I'll take contrary views, I think it's good. But in this case, when we're looking at the entire process, I took a look at the, the legal side, make sure that it was okay, and I also said, my second opinion was, is there an operational need? We presented these facts to the civil service board, and they did approve it, hence we're moving it forward to city council for final approval. If, if the chief who's there on the day-to-day would like to add any other comments, I mean, I, I would like for him to certainly add whatever I missed, but I mean, we're, we're living through this on a day-to-day basis, trying to control this budget and make sure that the residents of Easton are safe.
It just seems to me, Louis, that, and, and chief, that is, it doesn't make much sense on a business aspect of it. If a deputy is in place and, but not part of the management team, if that deputy can go back into the ranking file and disperse information that should not get there, it doesn't make sense, not good managing. That's just manager one oh one, you know? So my theory behind that is that, that manager or deputy, in this case, should be a part of the management team.
How does that preclude him from doing it without the rules in place?
It doesn't, but.
That's my point, then. So we're, we're making up, conjuring up scenarios.
You've taken, you've taken the management of this city and put it in the hands of three people who have a hard time even getting together to meet, let alone making the decisions on a day-to-day basis that Louis has to make.
I, I respect your opinion, I didn't make these state rules up. We're governed by the civil service.
And I understand that.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but.
But we all agree they're ambiguous.
And that's fine, too, but let's be, let's be factual, too, that my interpretation was based off of a solicitor's opinion when we rewrote these laws, and our city solicitors have reviewed this four times, that we've made four, three changes now.
And that's what makes this process unique.
Well, how does it make it unique? The same solicitor's been here for the past, how many years? Two decades? Like, the rule hasn't changed and the other one hasn't changed.
It is about twenty years.
The rule's changed in twenty fourteen.
Actually, it's, it's my, I think it's my nineteenth anniversary today.
I was close, then.
Today?
Well, it was around, it was July twenty-first or something.
Happy anniversary, Joel.
I'm so happy to have you on board.
So as far as I'm, we changed, we changed these. When I was in the social board, they were viewed by a solicitor, you guys approved them as council, and then they've been changed now, two times after that.
There's no, there's, there's nothing.
The law's not changing, Joel.
There's nothing wrong with working towards perfection.
But Joel, the law's not changing, my friend. The only thing that's changing here, and I hate to tell you this.
The problem is not clear.
It's your opinion.
That's the problem.
It's not consistent.
The law was, the, the law that we start, that we started working on those changes was ambiguous. The, the legislative decision at the time, it wasn't a legal decision, legislative decision at the time was to go along with what, what the pension board solicitor wanted, and now time has passed and we're running into real issues and concerns that are legitimate, and the better sense of the legislature, it's not for me to make those opinions. I mean, I've given you an opinion that's not, that's not an unqualified opinion, my opinion's qualified.
I'm just saying, it just keeps changing. That's the bottom line here, I mean, you're, it's not consistent. Well, your business model changes year to year. How does your business model change in a fire department? You have one responsibility. We have more than one responsibility. Give me the responsibilities, then. Let, let them out for me. We're here to protect the public. It's my job to make sure that we have functional equipment in order to do that. So that's three responsibilities or two responsibilities? Three. We provide EMS to the citizens.
Four.
We do risk management.
Do flood, drownings.
So what was your first responsibility?
What's our first responsibility is to protect the citizens of the city.
That's your only responsibility as far as, everything else is on, is an umbrella.
And that's your opinion?
I mean, I guess.
That's your opinion?
I guess.
Have you ever worked in a fire department anywhere?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I worked in the EMS agency before.
EMS is a different animal.
Oh, okay.
Than the fire department.
We're gonna start taking pot shots.
I'm not taking pot shots. I'm asking your opinion.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's not opinion, it's fact. This is fact.
There's a lot of responsibilities in a fire department other than just fighting fires.
That's correct.
Drownings, hurricanes, windstorms, I mean.
Protecting the public, that's it.
EMS, but that all comes, I agree with you, it all comes under that.
That's it.
They're a public safety organization, just like police. They're, it's public safety, but under the public safety, there's
Okay.
50 other things that they have to do. Crowd control is one.
Okay.
But it's not the only one.
So again, back to my point, though, I mean, the only opinion here that's changing is the solicitors. That's the bottom line. The law's not changing.
It's the same as 2019.
Yeah, it's a 2019 opinion. It's just.
Right, so what did we change 2019? Do you remember what we changed? We took out the written test. We kept the oral test.
Okay, right.
So again, so two years later, we're changing again.
Right.
To accommodate what? A business model?
To accommodate, yes, to accommodate a decision by administrators that, 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 written, that oral exam was superfluous.
You also had something in there that said they had to be a captain. None of the captains went the job. They've not reached the standard.
We have no job description for this, for this, this position.
Well, not until, Stephanie will definitely have a job description if and when this position is gonna be appointed.
Well, we know.
Every job here has a job description.
You can post it now if you like.
Well, the, the only reason why we didn't go, we didn't post is because we wanted to make sure we have council's approval in order to move forward. I mean.
So we, so when did the last deputy fire chief list expire?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I would say probably May.
Sorry, what?
I thought it was May.
Is there one person left?
Well, it'd be two years, so May of 2021, it's expired now.
What's that? So he doesn't want the job?
No, he's retiring.
Okay. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's really just, it's black and white as far as I'm concerned. So.
I called a question.
What do you call a question, Mayor?
Call a question on this resolution.
Well, I mean, obviously, this listener made an opinion. I mean, I'm the only one that disagrees with this assessment, because again, the law's not changing. We're just changing the way we interpret it based on a business decision, which as far as I'm concerned, Mayor, I mean.
Let me, uh, uh, let me, let me give you an honest reason why I voted for this the last time.
That's fine.
2019, or when you first came on city council. You were a new member to council, was trying to make, make sure that anything was your agenda, we would do it.
Right.
And we tried it that way. And it's not working, because now we have a deputy chief position that we need to appoint. And the reason why we keep losing is because the old order was so, I mean, there was no succession planning, and the old order was the senior guys were just getting, and then they would retire.
Mayor.
I mean, we lost John Price.
Right.
And.
Kevin Arnold.
Kevin, Kevin Arnold. I mean.
But Mayor, to, to, to your, to respect your opinion, I would review what you said in your, in your speech about testing, write those questions down, and have them sit in front of a panel of administrative directors.
That's circumventing the law. I mean.
No, it's not. The chief does it.
I know he does.
It's not circumventing the law. It's an oral exam.
But then again, it may work for the police department, not work for.
But the oral exam is being given by the civil service board, and I was a member. I was chairman of that board.
Right, but I, I never gave interviews.
I never sat on an interview. I never sat on an interview.
The chief has his own staff doing it. I mean, I don't know, Mayor. I mean, I think we're trying to, we're trying to circumvent what's going on just to solve a problem. Nothing says we can't have three people from your administration sit in front of these gentlemen or members of the department and talk to them about this stuff. Nothing precludes you guys without touching the law. You can have any interviews you want. I mean, really, it doesn't say you have to have three fire chiefs from wherever. Doesn't say you have to have someone from council doing it.
Again, civil service is one test only.
But what I'm trying to say is, right, so, but my point is, that's, it, it, it wheels down your list then. If you give them a list of the questions, and honestly, the mayor went through four of them, that to me are fantastic questions. And if you have them answer those questions in front of other leaders in the city, you've resolved your problem then. It's way that simple.
I disagree. If someone has a bad day during their interview, what's, there's no recourse then. If you have multiple interviews, you have a way to vet that person more deeply.
So you think that your process should be more complex than the police department then? That's your opinion? Because the police chief, if I'm not mistaken, chief, you have one interview? Okay, thank you, sir. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I respect your opinion, but really, I think we're overcomplicating it just to make something fit.
Well, I think the bigger problem here is the civil service board had the standards that they had to be on the force, they had to be an officer and all those. I think they're the problems we have.
And that, and that could be resolved, though.
Well, I think that.
There lies the difference between the police department and fire department. If the chief were to leave, he has two to choose from. I have none.
No, no, actually, that's not accurate.
He does. He has two captains.
He selects.
He has.
He selects.
Understand, but they usually go through the.
You're absolutely.
The captain.
Absolutely incorrect. We, he appoints, and we vote on it then. You're absolutely incorrect. I'm sorry. Like, that is inaccurate.
That's true.
If, if the mayor and the administrator decide they want.
The chief appoints, I'm saying, there's two captains in succession.
But that's not, has nothing to do with the chief. Once the chief leaves, he has, he can say, you know what? I want.
He can make a recommendation.
Thank you. He can make a recommendation. It holds no weight to us, because the administrator comes to us with the mayor's recommendation, and we vote on it.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, he has two people behind him that can carry out the succession plan, where there's nobody.
That's not accurate. I think he's got, thank you, Mayor. He's got multiple people under his, under his tutelage that can take over the city right now. Or if, if the mayor or the administrator decided they didn't, they didn't think anyone was qualified, they go outside then. I mean, this is, again, we're trying to circumvent a law that we don't like, to change it to bring somebody in.
I don't believe we're circumventing the law.
And just to be clear, I have no, I have no interest to allow the city administrator to bring someone in from the outside. That's not the reason for this.
Mayor, you missed my point.
I, I know. I understand your point, but.
I want to play clear that that was not my intention. All I'm saying is, it's the minister's role to recommend somebody, whether he went outside, inside, or whatever.
Right.
That's my point. Just want to make clear, that was not my intention to say that he's gonna go out and find somebody else from the outside. That's not my intent, Mayor. But the reality is, you can do the same thing for your deputy, deputy fire chief with assistance from the mayor's comments and the administrator. Like, there's no reason to change these rules. Sorry. So.
We're gonna have to professionally disagree on that then.
You could disagree with me all you want. We make the decisions.
I never.
We make decisions.
I never said you didn't.
I'm just, I'm just wanna make clear that you can disagree with me all you want. You're right to. But really, what we're doing is, we're, we're gonna take away a recommendation from a civil service board that had rules approved by a solicitor.
And the civil service board just approved changing these rules.
And what was the content of the conversation you gave them when you wanted to change them? I'm just curious what.
Everything we just talked about here this evening.
I, I, I spent a lot of time talking about the difference between a teacher and a principal.
Right, but.
That as a teacher, my principal's not in the same bargaining unit.
Right, no, but my point is, like, how did the conversation go with the civil service board? Like, what was the content of it?
Every, just to rehash everything, we gave them the basically two different scenarios. One was the legal opinion provided by Attorney Shear, and the other was operational, part of which is the timetable in which it takes to onboard someone.
So you know that the civil service board has an independent solicitor? Did you know that?
Yes.
Did you guys consult that person?
Yes.
The independent solicitor?
Yes.
You know who it is?
Uh, I don't know. Gazizian, Steve Gazizian.
And he, and he, Joel, did Steve Gazizian, you have a discussion about this?
Now?
No, regarding this change. Yeah, he said the solicitor was there.
I.
No, he wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, no. This was some time back, I guess, I, I, what I remember.
Did you just meet for these rules? Did they just meet for these rules?
They did, and they, they voted in favor.
Was the solicitor there?
No.
Okay.
Uh, to be honest with you, it's very difficult. It has been very difficult to get the, the, the board to meet.
Well, that's, that's fine, but I'm not the solicitor, though. The solicitor is an independent, it's like, it's like zoning your own board solicitor. We can, we rely on his opinion for zoning, zoning here and board material.
I, I think that the deliberative body had every right, especially the chair, to call for a legal opinion. I came in there as city administrator, and I called for a legal opinion as well, and the, the opinion was provided tonight in the packet. To, to be honest with you, again, I think the best course of action is to contact our state legislators and ask them to specifically, um, and.
And they can't come out with the answer, because it's not clear enough.
Explicitly put it in there that deputy chief needs to be part of the civil service.
I also want to be taller, but I mean, that's not gonna happen, so.
I, I disagree. I think, I think.
I can't be taller.
I, I disagree. I think change can happen.
At the state level?
I think change can happen, and, and I think it takes a lot of mobilization and effort. And I think that it starts by calling, um, our local legislators and telling them of the issues that we're having. I mean, we have plenty of them.
I tell you what, well, I'll call Bob Freeman, who's sat on the local government committee, and he pushed this through.
He's minority chair.
He pushed this through. And I'll get his opinion then.
I would say, I would say, to, to, to aid you on that, I would say, Mr. Freeman, the issue that we're having here is that it's not explicit regarding the distinction between the deputy chief and the chief. Please write that into the law as a clarification. Very simple.
All right.
I'd like to call upon order.
I mean, I don't know. I mean.
I call the question.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll call the question.
Thank you.
Is there any motion? I made a motion to, to resolve the, um, changes and approve the changes to the civil service rules. Is there any additional motion?
Dr. Ruggles made the motion. Mr. O'Connell seconded it.
Oh, that's right, you did it. Okay, is there any other motions? Let's have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Volcano.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
No.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
How, with that said, what I would like the administration to do, I'd like to direct the city administrator to have a, without the civil service board, we will conduct a written test that'll be based on written test and oral interview, which we do anyway. Um, my oral interviews, if I'm interviewing somebody like I did with Mr. Campos, is a minimum of two interviews, because I don't think one interview is enough. I think the chief said, what if this person's having a bad day? I've always interviewed twice. I know, Mark, you must have interviewed, interviewed the deputy fire director three times, and I think that's necessary. Um, so I, I will take Councilman Milan's, some of his suggestions, and incorporate them into our process, which we do anyway. But, um, more formally, more formally.
They don't, they're not gonna hold any weight, though.
Well, they do with this administration. I can't speak for other administrations.
No, I'm saying, but I mean, but think about, you just, you, you guys just vote away any kind of, um, removal of nepotism. You, you, really, I mean, that's the whole point of this.
You know what? Nepotism has to do with character. Let me give you a couple stories. Nepotism means that because we're a small city, no one in my family should get a job. And I felt that way, and I still do. No one, no one in the city hall or in the city administration, I believe, is, is related to me. However, when I was mayor back in the, in the eighties, when I was a kid, um, I had a cousin who was more than qualified to, to be a mechanic in the city of Easton. He applied for that job. He sold his business on Walnut Avenue, and he was looking for a job, and he applied for our mechanics job. And the president of the ASME union at the time came in and was very upset with me and said, oh, I hear your cousin, he'll get the job. My, my husband won't. I said, is your husband qualified? I says, does he have state inspection? No. Does he have diesel fuel? No. Does he have hydraulics? No. What is he? He's a truck driver. Okay, but he does mechanical work on the side. Okay, fine. I said, if a truck driver's position comes up, I would have no problem hiring your husband if he was the number-one candidate. I've never interviewed for positions. I've always designated the staff to do that. They bring the recommendation to me. It, it ended up happening that my cousin, and I told this story with someone just recently. I didn't think that my cousin should get the job because he was my cousin. He should get the job because he was qualified. And guess what? Not even a week after he was hired, a truck driver's position opened up, and her husband got the truck driver's job. Uh, because he was, he was number-one on the list. Uh, it's really hard. I mean, we hire people, I think we hire people based on their qualifications. And one of the things I pride myself on is that my staff from the top, I mean, I, I was, I relieved people from the previous administration because they weren't qualified. And they didn't have the designated certifications that they should have. Uh, you look at any one of our directors or even our supervisor, they have, they're bona fide in their own area of expertise, and I think that's important. When I leave, I hope somebody says, hey, this staff is a great staff. I'm gonna keep them all on. Because I didn't have that choice. I had to get rid of a couple people, and then no one likes getting rid of people. So I, I'm just directing to Louis. I know how he does it, and that's how him and Stephanie do it. So I, that's all I was trying to say, is that I think we should take some of the things, there are, there are reasons not to have nepotism in city hall, but there's also sometimes there's reasons, um, as in, in, in a case that you're gonna hear about very shortly, in two weeks. Chief, please.
As much as I hate to, Chief Scialzo.
Oh, you do not.
As much as I do, I hate to interject, and something that obviously is, it deals with the fire department, I feel that maybe, uh, because I've been used, as, as the department's been used on both sides of the argument, um, maybe just to interject something quickly to try to help maybe, from my perspective, where I see this going, as far as the fire department goes. Um, very, very accurate and exactly what we do. You know that I was very involved when this happened initially with a lot of these changes at the state level. Uh, myself and Councilman Milan actually, um, worked with, uh, Attorney Gazizian at that time to kind of come up with a process that we felt was fair. Um, however, I would, I would also say that, uh, the process is exactly like you said. We do a, a test, that's a pass/fail. We do an oral interview. Um, and then we can choose any one of the top three from that list. The, the thing that I think is a little different, though, between fire and police in this instance is, we have a large group of individuals uh, that do manage, that are outside the union that I use, that I lean on to basically run my department. So I have, um, I do have individuals to choose from, um, that I can put in positions, who I trust, who I can lean on and do those things. I could take any one of those top three, but it's a much broader pool. I think in the fire department, as, at least as I see it, and the conversations that I had with John, Chief Bass at the time, um, I, I very much do feel that the word chiefs is in there for a reason. I do believe that a deputy chief is a chief. There's, there's nothing else that he is. He's not a captain. He's not a lieutenant. He is a chief. So I have always felt that chiefs plural means deputy chiefs or any version thereof. But, um, I think in the fire department, the problem that you run into is you're asking the chief of that department to do a lot of things. If overtime's out of control, you go to that chief, he's accountable. If, uh, the equipment isn't the way it's supposed to be, you go to that chief, he's accountable. I think the least, uh, that you could do is to give him one individual that he can choose, that he can completely choose, regardless of, of, um, rank, and say, this is my guy that I can trust, that I can lean on, who will, uh, help me do the things you want me to do. See, I have a much broader pool to pull from than Chief Hennings does, and I think that's where this, uh,
Great.
might be cleared up a little bit, as far as the difference between police and fire, and the importance of being able for, uh, the chief. Because I have seen with my own eyes deputy chiefs who did not support their chief, who undermined their chief. And if you have to select an individual based on an oral interview, based on a select group that you can choose from, you may not get a guy who supports you. And if you don't do that, it is really difficult to run a department. You need to have at least one person, if not multiple. In my case, I have multiple. I'm very fortunate. But you need to have at least one person that you can say, I trust that guy with my life, I know that he's got my back, and that ultimately he will help me run this department. And I think that's what Chief Hennings is trying to accomplish. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
If I can just jump in, because, you know, this, uh, I think that what Councilman Milan is saying, if I can interpret it correctly, is that the removal, um, of the individual, of the deputy chief out of the civil service regs could potentially allow for, um, nepotism to occur. Could. Now, and perhaps he doesn't mean it by this administration. Maybe it's a future, future administrators. Um, because I think we've worked extremely hard on trying to select the best qualified, um, individuals in all of city hall. I mean, I, I'm, I'm very proud of all of the individuals that, that, that I work with here. Um, I can tell you that, especially through COVID, um, we not only hired the right skill set, but we hired the right personalities. Um, I, I can't think of anyone, um, per se, that, uh, didn't deliver during the, um, this COVID pandemic. I really cannot. Um, and if the complaints were out there, they were certainly, uh, well-deserved, because perhaps, um, the communication wasn't, um, well-put out there. And it really didn't start with the, the administration, but it started at the top at the federal level with regards to what was occurring in the pandemic. Um, I'd, I'd, I'd like to think that, um, council, in which you do, um, as a whole, supports this position because you trust the people who are running government right now on a day-to-day basis. Um, we are not, we, we avoid every, at every possible step to avoid nepotism. In cases that there, there is the perception, I will tell you that we vet out, uh, closely, if there are family members here in city hall, to make sure that their skill set and the personality really match the profile, and that they're the best fit for that position. Um, I would tell you that there, there are cases in which, if I really had to think on face value about nepotism and what, uh, certain things appear, could appear from, from, from the, uh, the viewpoint of the public, there are individuals here that wouldn't be hired here, and that would be at a detriment, um, to city government. Um, I'm telling you that we do everything that we can to hire the best individuals and the most qualified individuals, and it's for the long term. And that's why the city, I think, right now is in a solid position, and probably, at least from my perspective, um, has many years into the future of stability and growth, and it's because of the people, not just the finances. And, and, and I do want to say that, and I, I want to make that comment just to, so we're, we're clear that, um, I really don't think that, um, it's, the argument is made on the current administration, but it could be made, um, on future administrations, um, if this power is not exercised correctly. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Um, moving right along, Mr. Madam Clerk, if you would, introduce that resolution, and we'll have the presentation on open gov.
A resolution being introduced by Mr. O'Connell, where we would be reviewing and approving an agreement with, between the city of Easton and Open Government Incorporated, which would provide software services to the code office.
So moved.
Moved in second. Um, Louis, you want to call Mr. Narowski and Mr., and the chief of police up at the, in the order that you would like.
Yes. Um, Steve, what? Um, Steve, why don't you come up and, and talk a little bit first about, um, high level, the, the, uh, the, the platform, what, what, what it's gonna mean in terms of a, a better user experience? And then let's talk about some of the efficiency gains, because I thought the efficiency gains were, um, very interesting, but the, but the user interface, I think, is also significant.
Sure. Uh, Stephen Narowski, 123 South Third Street. Yeah, so, a few months ago, we entered into a process of interviewing, reaching out to and interviewing multiple vendors for software services. Staff ultimately decided on OpenGov. What they could provide us is, uh, essentially a seamless, um, process where applying for a permit, obtaining a rental license, um, and even modules we're going to work on with the RDA for the home loan applications and tracking those is as intuitive as shopping on Amazon. So, you know, step-by-step process, questions-
What is Amazon?
I'll shop on Amazon.
Maybe Target, Walmart, some other online vendor that, uh, that you may once or twice purchase from, or may not. Um, anyway, uh, i- it's very intuitive, no more paper applications are necessary, which would then, uh, reduce the requirement for clerks to take paper applications, type them into the system. You know, and, and speaking of, uh, efficiencies within that regard, uh, we process, um, over fifty-four hundred rental applications a year. And if you consider just ten minutes without interruption for every application to receive it, type all the information in, verify it's accurate, uh, process the payment, you know, you could only do forty-two a day, and that's without breaks, no phone calls, um, that's a hundred twenty-nine working days total of lost time just typing rental applications in. You know, we have building permit applications, contractor licenses, um, zoning applications, so on and so forth. So, uh, we're looking at a very conservative savings in time valued at, um, around thirty-four thousand dollars a year, just in time save, uh, which will be able to repurpose through this system to completely digitize all our records, so that everything that we have regarding a property is in the cloud and accessible anywhere where a code officer or anyone else with a license, and we have unlimited licenses in this program, could access and, and track a property and see what's going on with it. Um, it has very, um, intuitive and, um, complete reporting tools, um, it's customizable in-house. Um, our current system, uh, requires us to keep going back to the vendor, get updates and changes. This allows us to update our interface, the records we keep, the questions we ask, um, in a no-code environment, without having to go back to the vendor for an update. Uh, and then finally, the, the, the last piece is, it, uh, in that same vein as the intuitive interface for applications, uh, all payments online, uh, credit card, e-check, and then we'll have a, a separate mod, you know, uh, process. If someone still wants to pay by cash, um, they would be able to do it in-house, and then receive a receipt, and then finish their permit application that way. It'll improve our, uh, collections with regard to rental applications, building permit applications, um, as well. Uh, also with that, uh, the finance department would no longer have to process those, some fifty-four hundred checks we get from rental licenses, because they would be done electronically, which then would provide efficiencies on the finance side for payment processing. Yes?
Will there be a fee for someone who uses the payment?
Nope, uh, we're not going to add a, a convenience fee, uh, with regard to that.
Credit cards charge us, though.
Right, so, we are looking at a, a fee system, uh, our, our permit fees have not been updated in numerous years, and, you know, the cost of business goes up, our third-party inspection services have gone up, staff costs have gone up, so, uh, we are looking at a, a minor increase in permit fees, obviously council would have to approve that, but, uh, that would, the overall savings we have, uh, in efficiencies and processes, just, just the paper alone, we won't have to purchase anymore, uh, may cover those convenience charges.
Dr. Ruggles?
Yes, sir.
Well, what, how does, how does one enter their license stuff? Uh, are you talking about online, uh, they would be filing for a rental?
Yep, so-
What if I'm not available, what if I can't get online?
You could come to City Hall, and we'll have a kiosk here for you to fill it out.
Okay. Um, the other question I had associated with this is the migration of data. Am I off? You were off. I noticed that, uh, there are different formats that they're requiring our data in, uh, and I was just wondering if our data are in that, those formats?
So our data is in a SQL, uh, and it is compatible with the, SQL is a, a SQL, it's a, um, just a database structure.
Okay, well, they, they specified a specific IWRQ format?
That's, that's not a format, that's our current vendor.
Okay. Uh, well, they did, uh, also have a requirement that our Excel file have one row per doc? Are we in that?
Yeah, we, we have Excel, that, that's a typical database format.
Okay. And lastly, um, I was not aware that we had an ArcGIS server.
Uh, we don't, we, it's in the cloud through Ezra. Ezra's the provider for ArcGIS.
I understand that, but we, we, we need to have a, a, a base for them to attach to, correct?
We have that. We have all the shapefiles of the city, um, it's currently in Iwork, we have numerous layers of GIS data-
Okay.
-here in the city area.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a resolution. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I, um, I just wanna, one other question, and, and, I mean, we see these quite often, the, the different departments come in and say, this is the software that we need-
Sure.
-you know? And I, I, I always sit here and wonder, how is it that this software plays with other software in other departments? Because, I mean, I can understand how, uh, you know, codes has all of this data in, and it'd be really great if the Police Department could tap into this component of this information. And, and I'm just wondering if you've looked at essentially how this plays with other software?
Yeah, sure, so, you know, often with these proprietary softwares for, generally companies create softwares for departments individually. Um, you know, and, and police, for example, like you mentioned, have a proprietary software, which is very secure and, you know, can't be accessed. So, so both sides would have to be able to work out a system to, uh, create like an API where there would be data transfer. That, as far as police is concerned, that, that is not something I, I necessarily have looked into, uh, but as far as finance, you know, OpenGov has finance modules, finance and codes actually have a lot of overlap, especially with business licensing and occupancy permits, health licensing, and, and things of that nature, rental licensing as well. You know, so that, that is something that we could look at potentially in the future, but generally speaking, as far as plugging in to, in, you know, proprietary software across department lines, that, that tends to get, um, challenging, because both vendors don't particularly like to play well with each other.
Dr. Ruggles?
So, so, I'm, just, just to follow that, I mean, when you're talking about getting, eliminating the checks coming in, and that finance won't have to process that-
Mm-hmm.
If that's done in your software, but your software doesn't talk with finance software, how do they?
So, so, you know, we'll issue a report to finance on what collections we've had, we could do that daily, hourly, whatever the case may be, and then finance will receive a lump sum payment every, um, I, I, I would have to look and see when that schedule is, uh, of the payments processed through the service. So, instead of them processing each check, that's all processed offsite, and then the city receives an electronic payment for all total money received.
Stephen, me a question.
I'm just-
Take a peek at what he was saying. Is there any kind of possibility to create an API between us and Freedom for this module, this software?
I, that I don't know.
Okay. That's probably something we should look into, since it's more seamless then.
Just what, just to piggyback on what Peter's saying, isn't, isn't there supposed to be a component to that software with the API-
Yeah.
-that allows to share?
It's custom.
It's so customized.
We're gonna pay, we're gonna pay it.
Okay, got you, got you.
If you guys want customization, it's gonna cost money.
It costs a lot of money.
So.
There's no one software that, for a municipality, that's not custom-made?
Well, there is.
Well, yeah, it's very expensive.
And, and you also need to hire a database manager for-
Madison's gonna take care of that for us.
So, so two examples-
Starting tomorrow.
Both Allentown and Bethlehem have, have built, um, software, enterprise-level software solutions internally. To the extent of, um, which departments are under that enterprise software, I don't know yet. But one of the items, when we were thinking about, um, this issue that you raised, which is a good issue, um, is, is how can we be, how can we become more efficient? Um, not only from a, a, a cost perspective, but also, I guess, from an operational, uh, perspective. And, and one of them is to develop and build our own enterprise solution that can cross all these different departments, right? It, we've, we have been transitioning, again, you gotta be flexible, this is, you know, we're running, to some aspects, you have to think like a business person, and we need to constantly, uh, bring in efficiencies, and we, we've been doing that in the last, I don't know, ten years or so, um, very efficiently, by not building our own systems, but utilizing software as a service, like, like this solution that we're bringing in into, into, uh, the, um, into the department. Now, the debate, the, the debate internally, and one of the reasons why, uh, Steve and I looked at this and said, yes, this makes sense, um, was that it would take us at least five years, and that, that's just ballpark, it, to develop and create our own enterprise system, if that was even feasible from financially. Um, and I, and I'm being told now that things are changing, that we could potentially, uh, look in, into developing an enterprise system in-house, potentially, um, that's financially feasible. Financially feasible means in the half a million dollar ballpark or up. But I, I was thinking that this was gonna be in the million dollar ballpark or up, but it looks like times are changing now, as we speak. Actually, Mason, we've had a great conversation, and in fact, during his interview process, we had that debate, do we go ahead and invest in a solution now, or do we wait? Um, one of the analysis that Steve put together was, and I asked him, I said, what, what kind of soft cost savings do we have? Because if you look at hard cost to hard cost, you're gonna say, oh, well, layman's view is gonna, is gonna tell you that, that this costs, um, more than our current application. But when you dig into the details, the soft costs, the efficiencies that, that it brings, um, help offset those hard, hard costs significantly. So, the, the, the question, the, the question or the problem was, do we invest in this solution or not, and do we still look at the big picture? And the answer was, yeah, there, there was enough efficiencies to invest in this, there's some opportunity potentially to expand, um, with the software application, as, as Steve had mentioned. But more importantly, this will bring a better user experience and bring efficiencies, and that, and we can still continue to look at the big picture, which is, may take several years, and with Mason and Frank, we are starting to have those, um, discussions, um, and, and Peter's right, we could do things at a cost, and that's, that's the other thing. Software as a service has brought a great model, but the, the model for the company, for the software company, is that they make their money not so much on selling the package at one time, but they make their money on reoccurring costs. So they can offer you a solution that's essentially affordable. But the, the problem is, is now in every department, we have reoccurring costs, and it's starting to grow to a point where now we're starting to think, do we build our own solution, potentially? So those are, those are, and, and the reporting aspects of it, et cetera, that, you know, we could provide a, a lot more, um, information to us to make better decisions. So that, that's where we're getting at, to, to answer your question a little bit more.
Do we have, Chief, want to add anything? I know.
This just is, uh, in reference to, um, the, uh, money, the CARESAC money, uh, that was, I guess, the remainder of the money for public safety. About a year and a half, about a year and a half ago, the, uh, the Police Department, uh, more specifically, then Lieutenant, now Captain Brian Hernican engaged, uh, and, he, he tried to basically acquire a grant, uh, for a new report management system. He ended up, uh, getting a grant for about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, and with that we were able to procure, uh, Cody Systems Report Management System, and for the past year or so, we've been working on, uh, bringing that to the department. Uh, the, the system itself brings a lot more flexibility technologically, uh, advanced from what the system that we have now, uh, there's a lot more that we can do with it as far as, um, things like we can write, you know, in the cars, we're able to actually write tickets, print them out in the car, scan driver's license, uh, we're able to send, um, court documents right to the court electronically, right from our RMS, does all kinds of things with tracking data and things like that. Uh, so we're making the move to this new report management system. With that came an additional cost, um, of right around seventy thousand dollars for, um, upgrading the vehicles, new computers in the cars with larger screens, uh, so the officers can actually, uh, use those, uh, to actually do the reports in the cars, um, uh, to run all kinds of different, um, searches when they have individuals out on the street. So there's a lot of things on there that are gonna benefit the officers, not only from the report management side, but also from, uh, connections to, uh, the, the, our dispatch, they'll be able to actually connect to them directly, they'll be able to silently dispatch, meaning that when we get calls now, all that information will get passed down, they'll be able to see where other officers are in the cars, um, all tracking through different devices and different programs that we'll, we'll be acquiring to, to run in the vehicles. So, uh, that's, so that's, so about sixty thousand dollars, uh, we're gonna be actually using from that CARESAC public safety money, uh, to acquire computers, uh, keyboards, all of that, printers, and those types of things to support not only the RMS, but all of the other technology that we're gonna be bringing down from the county.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
Perfect.
Good, good stuff. Technology is great.
When it works.
Yeah. So, we're ready for roll call.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mayor Panto, where the city would accept the recommendations of both the chief and the administration, placing, um, Officer Matthew Rush on a retired list for, um, disability pension. And that's being introduced by the mayor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
And Mayor Panto?
Aye.
We have, I'm sorry, go ahead, one more.
One more.
We have, um, a resolution being introduced by Dr. Ruggles, where the council will accept the list of eligible promotional sergeants candidates, and where it also will list the top three candidates.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Okay, at this point now, we have, any, just, any comments or concerns from City Council first? Hearing none, uh, public comment on any agenda or non-agenda items, any items dealing with the city of Easton? Come up, give your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Beverly Hernandez, 3820 Farmersville Road, Easton. I just wanted to ask if there's any involvement on your part with, I'd like to read a little bit here, Phillipsburg is putting in a five-hundred-and-ten-thousand-square-foot warehouse proposed by Phillipsburg Delaware River Waterfront, that can be seen by night, especially by hundreds, if not thousands, of Easton residents and people enjoying the Delaware Canal Park. New tractor-trailer traffic, air pollution lights and backup warning beep, beepers will be very likely impacting, uh, Easton residents. will be very likely impacting Easton residents. It's right across the river from Easton's East Nescohoning Street, Route eleven. It's thirty-five times larger than the warehouse, the, the building that's adjacent to the warehouse site. I'm wondering if you are talking to the people in Phillipsburg to, to, to influence this? Because this is gonna impact us here. Basically, it's directly across from Easton residents. And do we want this polluting industrial business next to a commercial downtown attempting to go through revitalization? So, thank you.
Well, you're all here probably because of emails directed at me to, to take a position. I will not take a position against another municipality. It's up to people in Phillipsburg to decide whether they want that or not. If they don't want it, they should go to their meetings and, and express that. For me to use my bully pulpit to tell another community, I have a warehouse going in at Thirteenth Street, that's right across from the city directly, and it's in Wilson Borough. I have a truck stop going up in Williams Township directly on my neighborhood on South Side. And I don't go to those meetings and oppose them. Both are bad issues. The city had been working, as Louis knows, and David and, and John Kingsley, we were working with Leah Valley Industrial Parks to do a office park there. And it's, it's in the Wilson Borough. We, we don't have any choice. And I'm not happy about it, but there's not much I can do about it, because it's not in the City of Easton. But I'm gladly hear you, and I, and I don't disagree with you. It's just that I don't think the mayor of Easton should get involved in Phillipsburg politics to that extent.
No, I don't mean necessarily. Couldn't the council make a resolution? Is there informal talks that could be had, something? It seems something that's gonna impact us so much, when so much is being done downtown, and to have that eyesore right over there, it's...
I've, I've not seen the plans or the, or the, or the building. I, I don't know. It may not be an eyesore. It may be something else. I don't know. Nescohoning Street's down in, in my neighborhood, down from me, not downtown.
Six-eleven.
Nescohoning, and if it's across from Nescohoning Street, it's not across from downtown.
No.
No.
That's further down the road.
That's, that's, that's across.
Let me see here what they say.
I read the article.
Residents of apartments to the park, by the park, will have a commanding view of the warehouse. I, I, I don't know. It's, I, I thought it was some...
I don't know how you stop that other than, I'm sorry, let me come closer. I don't know how we stop that, other than just be cognizant of what's going on and talk to our friends and family that may live over in, in the Jersey side. It's very difficult as a councilperson to reach over to, to another municipal, in this case, another state, and ask them to make a change.
It's, it's, the only place you can go to really stop it would be the zoning hearing board. Because as I understand the situation, it was originally industrial, zoned industrial, that was zoned residential. Now the developer wants to rezone back to industrial. We have no standing. Like, I say, we allow people in Easton area to, to come to our meetings, but you're in Bethlehem Township.
No, no, I'm in Palmer Township.
Palmer Township. Oh, you're in that part of, you're thirty-eight, oh, yeah, thirty-eight. So you're in...
There's four Farmersville Roads.
Yeah, and you're, you're in Palmer Township. And, but we, 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 we think regionally. But going across the river, I mean, we would not have standing at, at the zoning hearing board, neither would you. Because you have to be a resident to order to go to a zoning hearing board to make your case. And I would definitely say that the people from Phillipsburg will do that, and they should, if they were really against it.
But you understand my concern. This is like an, you could build a dump across the river.
I totally understand your concern. I'm just saying, as an elected official in Easton, I don't think it's my right to go there and tell them what, what is good or not good for their, their community. That's all.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a great segue. My name's Fred Stein. I work with the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, and I had sent you, Mr. Mayor, I had sent you that, that email.
Could I have your address, please? I'm sorry.
Sure. It's nine-twenty-five Canal Street.
Thank you.
Bristol, PA. And I brought just some quick images. You mentioned that you don't have an image. So I brought those. And I have this on a, on a flash drive. I didn't know whether we could put it up for, can you do that?
Mazin, can you do that? Yeah, if, if there's a, the USB port is right on the other side of the... It's on the other side, it's on the left side of the computer.
On the side of the, the training.
Oh, Dustin's here too. I forgot Dustin's here.
Training day.
Turn the TV on.
Where's our button? Up here?
There's one over here.
Yes, please, I do.
How did developers turn on?
Dustin, what's the best, what's the best one?
It's like Spaceballs.
Use bully pulpit too.
Oh, boy.
This is across from you.
Yeah, it's across from me. It's right across from my house. Not across from downtown.
Dustin, we should start like streaming like Spaceballs every two weeks. Send it to background. Now, it's now.
I could, well, I don't want it picked up. But I thought if it was on here, then...
We'll get it, we'll get it up, we'll get it up. Dave, you wanna help? Caruso, he's, he's back. I'll, I'll see you later. Have a good one, Mr. Robbins.
Got it.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's password's not working, so I...
Can we just discuss it off the paperwork? Fantastic. Thank you, gentlemen.
So, so the, the point, the point of my presentation was, I wanted, A, make sure that you, or the whole, the entire council was aware of the issue, and, and to try and urge the, the council as a whole, that there, you know, that there are some measures that you can take. And you may not have legal standing, and I hear what you're saying. But municipalities can pass municipal resolutions, and they do all the time. And, and I'm involved with the, the Delaware Riverkeeper Network is a watershed organization from New York State down, all the way down to the Delaware Bay, the entire watershed. And, you know, there are issues happening in Bucks County, where residents and municipalities in New Jersey will write a resolution saying, look, we know that this is happening over in New Jersey. We're concerned because it has X, Y, Z impacts on our community. And we, and we choose not to, we're, we're, we're passing this resolution against that. You know, does that have legal standing across the river? No. But it does help make sure your position, I mean, what we're asking for, for you to do is to advocate for your residents. For, that's what we're looking to do. And if you look at the, at the image, at the images here, on the second image with the three lines, I neglected to put the, 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 the number of feet. But each one of those red lines is less than a thousand feet. So, all, you'll see, all three of these lines will, will stretch from the cleared property, where the warehouse will be going, and it reaches the residents that are on the South Side. So it's a thousand feet away, where now there's a forested area over there. There'll be a clearing, it'll be leveled, there'll be a sixty, eighty, you know, sixty or eighty-foot-tall warehouse. If you go to the third, the, the, the next image where it shows the Perron Warehouse Development Site, it shows you the scope of the, the, the project area, the footprint, so to speak. And the young lady that was up here just before me, you can see where the circled, the circled warehouse that's on that, that's over there today, that's about fifteen thousand square feet. The proposed warehouse is five-hundred-and-ten-thousand square feet, which is thirty-four times bigger than the warehouse that's over there now, that can already be seen from Easton, from the Easton side of the resident, uh, river. There's an image of that on the next page. You can see the, you can see the building from the Easton side. So imagine if you can see this fifteen-thousand-square-foot property looking across the river at something thirty-four times larger, that's gonna have an impact on Easton residents. And again, this is something that you do have, you, you're, you would be advocating for your community. Your community that's going through such amazing changes, that I hear tonight and last, and the last couple of night meetings. I mean, this, this is gonna have a negative impact on, on those residents. On the next image, you can see if the, the actual concept plan down at the bottom has, has a, a very rudimentary, but it's a draft from the, from the developer who wants to put it in. And again, it emphasizes the size of the, of this project. And it's gonna be, it, it's gonna clear that woodlands that now, and you can see that on the picture, where it says above the current view of the railroad bed and the woods from the Easton towpath, the, the clearing where the stormwater basin will be is just on the other side of those railroad tracks. So now where people that are enjoying the DNL Canal, or any, any of the residents down in that section looking across now see woodlands. At night, they see dark sky. Now they won't see that. They'll see, it'll be cleared away. And again, you, you would be advocating for your residents. And I, and I'll quickly move forward. The consistency report that you see where I just highlighted this, you know, it talks about the, this is a, almost a forty-four acre site, and all, all four, or all three of those properties are covered with what they call overgrown vegetation, which is a forest, and that the, the project summary, there's an industrial building there of approximately five-hundred-and-ten-thousand square feet. The Easton zoning map just there to represent this, you know, the, the location where this proposed warehouse is gonna go. And warehouses are going all over the place, and we're saying that, and, and warehouse, we know that warehouses should go next to interstate highways and things like that. But this is going down into a forested area right next to the Delaware River. You know, right next to an area that is, is residential nearby, and those trucks are gonna be, and this again, I understand, this is not an Easton issue, you know, where those, if those trucks are gonna affect Phillipsburg residents. But some of those trucks are gonna come over here, you know, you know, on their way to the interstate. Those trucks will have, and this is in the next slide, the, you'll hear those trucks, when those trucks back up, you'll hear beep, beep, beep. You know, the lights now, there'll be, there'll be lights all around the parking lot. You know, so you'll have light pollution that will impact Easton residents.
Does Phillipsburg, excuse me, does, does Phillipsburg have, in their zoning ordinances like we do, that the light can't be, leave the, the, the...
Trespass?
No, it, yeah, can't, and it can't leave the site, and there's required buffer zones?
I, I would, I would, I don't know their, their zoning code that well, but I would assume it is. But are you, but we all know that even, even if there's, the, the light is directed down and there's, and there's shields around it, it doesn't mean it's not viewable from outside the, you know...
I was thinking more of the buffer. I mean, the, most townships I know, and municipalities, require a six-foot buffer around the edge of the project with trees, so that it...
Six, six feet?
Yeah.
But, but six feet is...
Plus trees. Six feet plus trees. So the trees are obviously taller than six feet.
Right. But it, it will, it will, it doesn't, it's not gonna stop the view that you'll have. You know, you'll see the glow like a, a mall will, you know, and it'll be, you know...
I hear the gunshots now. The, the, the Phillipsburg pistol range is right across the river.
Right.
So I do hear the, so I'm, I'm sure I'll hear the trucks, but I do hear the gunshots. People think they're from Easton.
Have you spoken with any concerned groups in Phillipsburg about this?
We're very active. You know, we're very active in organizing residents. And the Delaware Riverkeeper Network is just one of many organizations that are, that are doing this. Because we're challenging warehouses all over the, in the white township. They're looking to put a three-million-square-feet in the middle of a, a farm field.
Well, have they brought it up with their own city council yet?
Oh, yeah. They, well, the city council is, is moving fast and furious, and we're going at loggerheads. And there's, litigation has already been started on procedural grounds.
Are they, are they, is their city council solidly in favor of this?
I could, they haven't had a vote, but my guess is yes, just from reading body language, hearing the context of questions, and the way they respond to community members.
What was the Delaware Riverkeeper's position when it was zoned from industrial to residential?
That was, that was, we weren't involved with that.
That was important stat.
Are they going to have issues with their, in their own, with their own zoning? I mean, have they, has this gone?
They've changed the, the, I'm not sure I understand what you're...
But their zoning review board has, have, have they...
No, they're moving forward to, the, yeah, the, the planning board, the land use board.
Well, the planning or zoning, yeah.
Yeah, they've changed, they changed the zone from residential to industrial, light industry, so that will allow the... Allow this. So, you, you know, with the residential, you know, certainly that would have resulted in clearing, clearing of land too. But I think you have a lot more opportunity to make it more, less intrusive, and ecologically less intrusive and, and, and beneficial to the environment, not so impactful on the, on the river and the environment.
The, the, the locomotive goes down that way, doesn't it? Doesn't it go right past that site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a rail line.
It's a rail line right here.
Yeah. And what would be your point? I mean...
No, I'm just asking, I, I was trying to determine how far off the riverbed they are.
The, the, the image, the one image with the footprint, the, the drawing, it shows that the, the clearing goes right up to the railroad tracks. The stormwater basin is right there. It's kind of like the shape of a, of a half moon.
I see it.
And again, that's a concept plan, but that's, you know, that's what, that's what we're working in. And then the final, you used the word bully pulpit. Thank you for that. That's like a perfect... But these are the, these are the steps that we think that you could do without going over and saying, and you personally, or any of the council personally, standing up and saying, we're against this. But I mean, DCNR, who is the oversight agency of the DNL Canal, I mean, this is gonna impact. I mean, wouldn't you think that this is gonna impact the folks that are out there on a Saturday or Sunday, recreating along the park, Easton residents and other Pennsylvan, you know, residents from all over the place? They're gonna look over. Now they see this somewhat bucolic forested area. Those are gonna be gone, and you'll see the, the rooftop of a sixty-foot-tall warehouse. So it would, you could reach out to DCNR and say, hey, what's going on with it? Does DCNR have any authority here that, where they can speak up and, and voice? Maybe the, maybe the buffer area could be increased, because now you're talking about the park, the park user experience. I'm not sure, and, and I don't think you guys are, but it could be where DCNR could say, you know what? We do wanna get involved. We do wanna inquire, at least, and just let Phillipsburg know that people on the outside, it's gonna impact, just like the different projects you mentioned. It's gonna impact the area, the residents of Easton, and you're asking for as many mitigation precautions, or, or maybe go back to residential. And so, just, just briefly, the last few things, we did, they're not requiring an environmental impact study on this, but that should be part of the Phillipsburg's procedure, to look at what is gonna be the total and cumulative impact ecologically and socially. This is right next to a low, what, what's called in New Jersey as an overburdened community, an environmental justice community. They're already burdened with truck traffic, and this is gonna be bringing new trucks right in there, that, right into that community. And again, this is not an Easton issue, but it's something that Easton could reach out to New Jersey DEP, in the Environmental Justice Department. They're getting ready to adopt new regulations, just to inquire, how can those new regulations help drive and protect those residents over there? And again, that you're not objecting to the project, but you're just inquiring just to make sure it's done as, as sensitively, I guess is the right word, as possible. And then the final, the final bullet on the, on the list here is the same, the developer of that project, the Perron Construction or Perron Development, is doing work in, in Easton. You know, good work is from what I, I, I hear. And so that, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity to discuss, how can, how can that project over there be made better, so that it doesn't have the impact on Easton residents? You know, there's, and there's an opportunity, and I know there's a lot of, a lot, well, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'd like to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council?
Thank you for...
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate you coming in.
Okay. All right. We'll continue to work, and we'll continue to communicate. We'll continue to communicate. We're working primarily with Phillipsburg and Warren County residents, but we'll continue to work with Pennsylvania residents too, because it's a regional issue.
Thank you, Fred.
Anyone else like to address city council?
Good evening. I'm Mike King, Twelve-Front Street, Phillipsburg. And to clarify, the vote at council was three to two, so council was split on this. And the other thing I wanted to add to what Fred said is that in researching these, these warehouses, which, you know, as Fred pointed out, are very much taller than you might think. you might think, um, it's the fumes. It's the fumes from the trucks. In this particular warehouse, there'll be, uh, four hundred and fifty truck parking spaces. So, uh, especially California is, is trying to move on this, because the impact is, is, uh, is of course the warehouse, is of course the lights, but it's the air. And, and I think this is what Fred is getting at too, in the marginal neighborhood where, uh, uh, in Phillipsburg, which has very limited access, uh, you, is only two ways out of that area, you have to go down South Main Street. Uh, there, there is no other way to do it except to go through the, the neighborhoods. But it's the fumes of the trucks, and, and as Fred pointed out, we're only a thousand feet away, uh, in, in Easton, so all of those lights, all of that noise, but those fumes will be impacting. So I want to endorse what Fred is saying, that, uh, even though you, you don't have the clout to make a decision for, uh, Phillipsburg, to come to its senses about this, because it's its own council that has approved this, uh, this change by a vote of three to two. But, uh, weighing in would certainly be appreciated, because.
Beverly, there must be at least twenty-four warehouses that have been built in Palmer Township. And we have not taken a stand on any of them, and they're much larger, they're, they're a million and, one point one square, million square feet. I, I just, again, I, I, I go to meetings and, in Lehigh Valley, and talk about my concern about warehouses, and it's not just your short-term concerns. I agree with your short-term concerns, my long-term concern is, none of them are buying it, they're renting. So what happens in ten years with all these warehouses in Lehigh Valley, when the transportation network changes and they move? We're going to be stuck with buildings that are useless, and we've destroyed millions, not millions, thousands of acres of farmland and open space to create a very short-term economic gain. And that, I, so I don't disagree with you, I really don't, Mike, I, I, I just don't like going to other communities, I mean, I'd, I'd love to go to a Palmer Township meeting, and, I mean, when, when Charlie Shrin had his development, it was going to be a neo-traditional type development, TND, and traditional neighborhood development, I haven't seen that Main Street yet. I've seen a lot, I've seen a Sheetz and a, Sheetz and what else is out there? And that's it.
So, a related aspect is that you have that same developer that is going to, has been developing and will be developing more in, in, uh, Easton. And all of these things that we're pointing out, he is, wants the high-end, uh, renters and purchasers to come in, while the view shed where they'll be walking, the air that they'll be breathing, the lights, et cetera, will be degraded. So just to the degree that, that the Easton could appeal to that developer to reconsider what, what he's, what's he's up to.
Mike or Fred, um, what, is there a planning commission, uh, besides Phillipsburg? Like, does Warren County have a planning commission that has reviewed this at all?
No, and it hasn't gotten that far yet.
You have to talk to the microphone, please.
No, it ha, and it hasn't gotten that far yet. So, and there, and there may be, and, and I, and I'm, um, I couldn't say tonight whether, you know, there, whether it's because of water or septic or, um, or truck traffic on area roads, whether the Warren County Planning Commission will get involved. I know in White Township, because of wastewater and stormwater, uh, the county and state will both get involved with it, but, so I'm not sure about that.
And White Township, that already happened.
I mean, there's no way, well, let me just, I'm sorry, let me just finish. I, I don't think there's any way the, 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 the county planning commission wouldn't get involved, I mean, they, and I don't know if they're advisory or not, I, I don't know what kind of authority they have, but it seems to me that they would weigh in pretty heavily.
And I appreciate, I, what, and I see what you're doing, is you're offering, where, where else do we have possible stops? And, and the Warren County is definitely one of them, DEP will be def, definitely one of them, the Green Acres, which is their, uh, uh, state open space program will be one of them.
Have you mentioned it to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission at all? I don't remember, Sam, and not that they can really do anything.
Right, yeah. Yeah, not, no, we haven't done that.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead, Dr. Ruggles.
Uh, I just, a question, you said they, they, Phillipsburg voted three to, what was it that they voted on?
They voted on the zoning change.
It's, oh, okay, so that was on the zoning changes, three to two, okay, okay. Um, and I, I just, I just want to make an observation, I mean, the, the proposed warehouse that's going to go in, uh, right off of twenty-two here, you could make the same arguments with, right? And, 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 um, and basically all the, all the ones in Palmer, but I mean, the one on twenty-two is, it might be twenty, a thousand feet from my house, I'm not sure, but, but, I mean, there's a lot more houses, a lot more residents, that, I mean, the whole Silk Mill is, is right there, I mean, where, where this is going to go in. And so I, I think that that is something that we, we really have to concern ourselves about, you know, taking a position on this warehouse, uh, versus everything that has, you know, has been developed that impacts the city. I mean, you know, it's going to impact, um, the, the truck stop on, over in Williams Township. That's going to really impact the city. I'm, I'm sure the chief is going to get a lot of calls to respond to that truck stop, because there's a lot of things that go on in truck stops that are not, not real good, and Williams doesn't have a, a police chief, uh, over there, I mean, a police department that could, could handle that, you know, and who's, who's, who's close, right there, you know? And so, we get impacted all the time by surrounding municipal.
No, that, that's right, and, and you, and, and, you know, you have to, I guess you have to pick your battles, but, um, you know, this is one that we feel is, you know, we're involved in, because of proximity to, not only in the environmental justice community, but the Delaware River, that's our, that's our.
And I, as a sidebar issue, it's certainly sidebar, are, is your River, Riverkeepers' um, organization doing anything about the amount of sediment that's coming from the north? I mean, the river today is brown. I mean, it is, there's so much sediment, we, we just had to enact a stormwater fee for our residents to clean up the Delaware and the Lehigh, and, I mean, what's coming down from the north? We had no rain last night, it was all north of us.
Right.
It's, it is full of sediment, I mean, and, and the water plant is, it's creating a lot longer to purify the water for drinking than with, than it is normally, because of all the sediment that's in the, it's in the river.
Well, that, you know, the river's doing one of its jobs, you know, the, the, one of the, and not to be facetious, but one of the jobs of a river is to move sediment. We, I sat on a three-year, a, a project three-year study, looking at the estuary, the, down where the freshwater meets the, the saltwater, and there's a budget on how much sediment is supposed to be coming down there. And there's like, the whole process with EPA and the state agencies and USGS and others was looking at, you know, how do you, how do you manage the amount of sediment coming down, because you, you want to control stormwater, like your stormwater fees and green stormwater infrastructure and all of that, and agencies are, are doing that on both sides of the river, but you do need a certain amount of sediment to come down to, um, to be part of the ecological balance.
Wow, when I was, when I was at, when working for developers for sixteen years, we weren't allowed to let any sediment leave our property.
Well, but you're talking, this is erosion, and erosion is an.
Erosion in the river's one thing, erosion from subdivisions, these are subdivisions, they're giving off sediment, that's where, this sediment's coming from subdivisions. And, and warehouses.
It's mighty, I live on the Cooper River down in Camden County, and ours is, this looks pretty clear compared to the Cooper.
Well. We're used to cleaner water.
Yeah, well, it will be, give it a couple of.
I know.
And the twin, and the twin, um, twin rivers.
Tubing company.
Tubing company is going to benefit from this.
Well, they're, they're not benefiting right now, because nobody wants to put their fanny in their, their derriere in the Delaware right now.
I remember that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address city council on, uh, city issues or concerns?
Uh, I, I happen to be here, uh, it's Mike King again, from Phillipsburg, and I spent a lot of time in, uh, Easton, and, uh, I have quite a bit of concern about Centennial Park and demolishing those houses. The footprint of those houses is not that large, and there was so much need for housing in the town, people talking about it all the time, and it just occurs to me that one possible use would be as a halfway house for people coming out of the homeless shelter, as a way to interim. Uh, I understand the need for the open space, I, I definitely have that on my mind, as far as where to, where, where the community can meet, and I understand the need for that, but giving up houses is, is.
No one likes to do it, but open space in the West Ward, the most densely populated part of the city, we are looking to create open space and greenery in that area.
I have some ideas about it.
That, that Centennial Park happens to be the epicenter, it's right at Twelfth and Ferry, it's the epicenter of the West Ward, especially the north side, the south side of it.
That property goes all the way to the next street, right, on those two lots?
No, no, no. There's three out there. Spruce Street.
Only.
Spruce Street is, has houses on it.
Just to the alley where the garage is?
We don't even go that far. It was an old, when I was a kid, it was an old clock factory, guy used to fix clocks in there.
It wasn't long ago that he was in there.
Well, it wasn't that, the place is.
Thank you.
Beyond rehabilitation.
But I just, I just wish there was something else that could happen, and, uh, I have noticed even, I was, Walnut, uh, no, the skateboarders are all around. There is skateboarding everywhere, and they don't seem to need much to be able to be happy, but they don't seem to be, want to be somewhere away either. So it occurred to me on Walnut Street, where that park is, and that coming down to Northampton, that there's a possibility, it's a nice slope, it could be a, a great place for, for, for skateboarding, I, um, so, I just wanted to, since I'm here, I've been on my mind about that, to express to somebody that I wish those houses were saved.
Anyone else, Susan, you have?
Hello, everybody, my name is Susan Ravitz, uh, my address is one four four Church Street, Easton, one eight zero four two. I don't have much to add to what Fred and, and, um, and Mike had to say. What I want to say, though, is, um, to the mayor and to, you know, city council people, you might not want to tell people what they should do or should not do, but I think it's negligent of this body not to express deep concern about what's happening, because the impact, there is no positive impact whatsoever for the city of Easton, for that warehouse. And, um, to ignore that is negligent. I think you have a responsibility to express concerns, and Fred made some suggestions, and, and he's way more knowledgeable about all this stuff than I am, there probably are other suggestions that could be made. And I, I really, I really think, Mayor Panto, it's negligent not to make something because of the impact that, that it will have on our city, and there's no positive to it, and there probably are worse things even that are going to happen downriver, all sorts of things that might not even come up, and the envi, also, an environmental, environmental justice is very important. I mean, they would not necessarily be doing this next to a wealthy community, but they can get away with it because it's a poor community. And I just think you guys have a responsibility to speak up with good information, that you're not going to get the best information from me, because I don't know all of this stuff, but you, it's out there, and I would just like to ask you to please, please not avoid expressing your concerns about it and the negative impact that Easton will, will, um, suffer from what's being built, um, along with what you had to say, Mayor Panto, about, what's going to happen years from now. I mean, that's a, you know, a bunch of empty nothings.
Anyone else like to address city council? Seeing no one raising their hand or coming forward, motion for adjournment?
To move.
Second.
And moved in second, roll call Madam Clerk.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Malan?
Aye.